We're going to start the meeting with the scheduled budget hearing. Where there'll be a presentation and opportunity for members of the audience to listen in on what the budget is about this year. Later on, there'll be an action item where members of the audience and board members will be asking questions. And then we'll go on to some reports, and we're going to try to do a student-related report right away, so trying to be sensitive to the fact that this actually is a school night, too. So without saying anything else, let me go to Alan Alvis, our deputy superintendent, who will do us, give us an overview of the budget for 2011-12 school year. Alan?
Thank you, and good evening. Tonight I will be reviewing for you the legal requirements for a budget adoption, the financial status of District 67, a brief overview of the 2011-12 budget, and then I'd like to leave you with two takeaways on this, so I'll try to make this very succinct. Prior to conducting a hearing even for a school district, a district, or in order to adopt a budget, a district must act on it by the end of their first quarter. Our fiscal year starts July 1st, so the end of our first quarter is September 30th. Prior to adopting the budget, the school board must place a tentative budget on public display for at least 30 days. We placed the budget on display at the end of July, so we far exceeded the 30-day minimum. You also have to schedule a date and a time for a public hearing, so again, back in July, we established tonight as the date, and 7:00 PM is the time for the public hearing. And we had to publish a notice in the newspaper advertising the public hearing, and we've complied with all of that. So we will conduct the hearing now, we'll make some brief comments, there will be an opportunity for public comment, then the hearing will be closed. Then later in the agenda, you will be asked to consider and adopt the FY12 budget. First, I want to start with where are we as a district? And as you know, as we've talked at prior budget meetings and at levy meetings or in finance committee meetings, in response to economic declines over the past several years, the district has negotiated a teacher contract that deviated from past settlements. It was more reflective of the current economy at the time that it was negotiated. We've implemented certified and support staff reductions. Some of those reductions have been driven by enrollment declines, but some of those reductions have also been driven by economic conditions. And we've implemented line item budget reductions, and that's either referring more to zero-based budgeting, looking at past actual expenditures, or rebidding or renegotiating contracts. Transportation, copiers, food service are all things that we've looked at in the last Those changes have really changed our organization. The chart that's up on the board now shows the staffing trend over the last several years, and you can see that in 2008, 2009, we had a total of 297.69 full-time equivalents, or FTEs. And that number has steadily decreased over the last several years. Now again, some of that is driven by a slight decline in enrollment, some of that is driven by economic conditions, but as we enter the 11-12 school year, we're down 3.9% from a year ago. We're down, if you look at the bottom right-hand corner, staff-wise, 9% over the last several So salaries and benefits are by far our largest expenses, so when you take this in combination with the other line item budgets reductions that we've made, you'll see that our expenses over the last several years have actually declined. Now while, and I apologize for the color for this 11-12 bar, because it came out fairly light, while our expenses are up from last year, you can see, though, what we're projecting this year of $35,060,000 is below what we spent three years ago in '08-'09 of $35,289. Now this analysis excludes capital projects because that tends to skew the numbers. If you do a parking lot one year and then you don't the next year, it looks like you're really cutting, but it just tends to skew it. So we've taken that out, and then we had to adjust for consistency in how we accounted for shared service expenses. But again, in leveling this out, we anticipate spending less money in this coming year than we did three years ago. That's left us in a very strong financial position. In addition, though, to making these adjustments in response to what was going on with the economy, we also knew several years ago that as we entered FY12, we were going to have a one-year gap in revenue from TIF funds. And we talked about that in July, I'm going to touch on that again in a moment. But in addition to making changes in our organization in response to the economy, we've also built up our fund balances to prepare for the gap that we saw coming this year. And I made the reference to TIF funding, we talked about it in July, I won't go into it in as much detail, but I would like to touch on it. What is tax increment, what is a tax increment financing district? It's an underdeveloped area that is likely to remain that way due to economic and physical deficiencies, and as such is eligible to become a TIF. Once designated as a TIF, bonds are typically issued to allow for infrastructure improvements. And then the incremental tax revenue increases resulting from development in the area is used to pay off the bonds over a period of up to 23 years. So many people don't realize that Lake Forest actually has a TIF in town, and I tried to show a map in July, it didn't work out very well, so just going to talk to it. The TIF in Lake Forest is located mostly on the west side, and it includes the west-side train station, the McDonald's, Sunset Foods, residential areas behind Sunset, residential areas near Everett School, and important for us, Everett School itself. Everett is within the TIF. So if you go back 20 years, when there was no infrastructure there and no likelihood of development, the creation of a TIF put in the roads, in the sewers, in the utilities that then sparked the development that now exists. And over the years, even though if anybody here lives in the Everett School attendance area, you have a tax bill, your taxes to District 67 aren't really coming to the district, they're going into the TIF fund to pay off the improvements. Now, so what is the gap in the TIF revenue if we're not getting revenue? Well, because Everett School is located in the TIF, it became eligible for improvements to be paid for from the TIF, because we have a very good working relationship with the city that has occurred. So the last several years, the district has been receiving disbursements from the TIF. In FY09 and FY10, I believe it was a million and a half dollars each year. In FY11, the year that just ended, it was 1.3 million. There is no disbursement scheduled for FY12, but the TIF will soon close and come on the tax rolls. When it comes on the tax rolls, then we'll begin receiving the revenue from the property taxes there in FY13. So that's where that one-year gap was created. So again, we've known about it for several years, we've planned for it, we've built up our fund balances to adjust for it. So when we look at the FY12 budget summary, we anticipate $35,131,752 in revenue, and we anticipate spending $36,390,92 in expenses. So the deficit there is $1,258,340. Now what's interesting is, when we concluded negotiations in FY, in the fall of '09, using the same five-year projection model that we use, the deficit we projected was within $20,000 of what we're showing. So we know our model works if the assumptions are good, and again, we've planned for it, we've anticipated, it's not a structural deficit, it's a one-year gap. So the takeaways I want to leave you with is the proposed FY12 budget contains a deficit due to a change in TIF revenues, but it was identified several years ago and planned for. And that the budget and staffing reductions over the past several years have kept the district in a very strong financial position during a severe economic downturn. That concludes the administrative comments relative to the FY12 budget. I'd recommend now that the floor be open for public comment regarding the budget. Following public comment, the hearing would be closed. And then again, later on in the agenda, you'll be asked to act on the FY12 budget.
Thank you. So board members can ask questions in the other meeting or right now?
Either place.
Okay.
I have some questions.
Yes, okay.
Alan, you mentioned that capital projects were excluded and shared services revenues were adjusted for. Could you outline for us what capital projects were excluded specifically and how you made adjustments to the shared services component?
Well, the capital projects, for example, in this year in FY12, we are doing some roofing projects, and we're doing, repaving the parking lot at Deer Path, so in ballpark numbers, it's $900,000 of capital improvements. If that had been done last year and then we dropped down, it would give the illusion that we've cut more out of the budget than we have, because capital projects tend to spike up and down. So by taking those out, what we're trying to show is basically our day-to-day operations and the trends that you're seeing there. So that's why we've excluded them, just from this analysis. On shared services, several years ago, when shared services was started, in an effort to be very transparent, the board said, "We're not going to net things out, we're going to cut checks back and forth." And you recorded as revenue, and you record your expenses. But what we realized a couple of years ago is that the state has a formula for calculating what they call the operating expense per child. In that formula, it was capturing the expense side of it, but we weren't getting credit on the revenue side. So we worked with our auditors about changing how we account for that so that it would be captured in the operating expense per student and give a more realistic picture of what that cost actually is. But because that change took place over the span of time that I showed here, we had to make an adjustment to make it consistent.
So what adjustment was made? Is there a formula or a specific dollar amount?
We just, we, in the expenses shown, we, yeah, we reduced, we netted the revenue, the offsetting revenue against the expense. So in '08-'09 and '09-'10, we lowered the expenses consistent with the offsetting revenue received.
Any further questions?
Yeah, Alan, after the budgeted deficit, what would the reserve be?
I debated about whether or not I was going to put that in tonight's presentation, and I decided not to. And it's, it's going to be around $5 million, maybe a little less. The reason I chose not to put that in is I think that's a little bit of an artificial number right now, and as a member of the Operations Committee, we've had a conversation around some of that, because as we saw interest rates plummet from 5% almost zero, as we saw the state fall three-quarters of a year behind in payments, as we experienced a one-year tax cap increase of 1/10 of 1%, we pulled things in, and we started doing projects, the only projects we did were truly safety-related. And in effect, on some things have kicked the can down the road a little bit, so delayed doing some capital improvements that we tried to stay on top of to keep the buildings looking good. Well, they won't go away. And so the reason I left, and I didn't make it a highlight of the presentation, is to focus on that. I don't want to give the illusion that we are actually better than we are, because I think over the course of this year, as we've talked about in the Operations Committee, we'll develop a plan on where do we want to be and need to be with facilities in three, four, or five years, and that may include spending some of that money. And that, once we know that and have that plan, I think that's a truer picture of exactly where we are. Now, having said all that, I don't think we're like some institutions where we are deferring absolute, you know, critical life safety things. We're in good shape. What was done in the district in 2000, the Project 2000, our roofs, our boilers, our windows are in relatively good shape.
Alan, have the budget cuts and everything had an impact on like educational qualities, like in terms of programs or class size or anything like that?
I'm going to try and go back to the staffing. And some of that I'll leave to others, because instruction isn't my area of expertise, but... If you look near the bottom, the smallest reduction in staff has been in the teaching ranks of 7.2%. Now, off the top of my head, I can't tell you how much of that is enrollment-driven or declining enrollment-driven, and how much is tightening up on class size. But as we've really kind of navigated our way through the last several years economically, what we've tried to do is maintain continuity of program. We've also tried to improve programming. There are things going on now, the Mandarin program, the Netbooks, the infrastructure improvements. You know, so we've tried to advance and maintain continuity of program and taking a long-term perspective on things. So we've tried to minimize the impact on the instructional program, is the short answer.
Any further questions? We will have the opportunity to ask more questions should you choose to in the regular board meeting. So this, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
This brings us to, yeah, this brings us to public comment specifically regarding the budget. Is there a member of the audience who would like to speak regarding, specifically regarding the budget? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn from the budget hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, budget, uh, motion carries unanimously. Okay. Now I need, I have to do that twice tonight. Would like to call to order the City of Lake Forest, School District Number 67, Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, September 27. Madam Clerk, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Anderson?
Present.
Mrs. Fisher?
Present.
Mr. Julian?
Here.
Mr. Pendersky?
Present.
Mrs. Rose?
Present.
Mr. Shuler?
Still here.
And Mrs. Wold?
Here.
All present.
Thank you very much. Now, board members, may I have a motion to amend the agenda and move the, it's the student development report to the next item?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Dr. Griffith, the student development?
Okay, board members, thank you. Well, we have quite a few guests here tonight, so I think it's really wonderful that we would be able to do this first. So I'm going to call Dr. Julie Cooley, who will introduce the topic for us.
Good evening, board members. It's my pleasure to be here tonight to talk about the Student Development Vision Statement III, and we're going to look at the goal and some of the metrics on that behind in the presentation, because we want to get our students up here as quickly as possible. So I want to introduce, though, Rebecca Leifman, Assistant Principal at Deer Path Middle School, and Joe Moline, the Student and Faculty Services Coordinator, his new title this year, which means we ask Joe to do anything we need him to do, in all areas. And I'm going to let them lead the presentation, and then we'll have our students up here shortly.
Good evening, thank you so much for having us. I'm Rebecca Leifman. In addition to being the Assistant Principal at Deer Path Middle School, I'm the very proud Director of the Emotional Wellness Initiative for the district, grades K through eight. And tonight, in this year, we're launching our fifth year of the Emotional Wellness Initiative, and we want to highlight just some of the many efforts we celebrate in our schools and in the community, and as the quote says, "Celebrate what you want to see more of."
Good evening, I'm Joe Moline. One way of thinking about children's development is in terms of three broad and partially overlapping areas of influence: families, schools, and communities. Now, it's increasingly being recognized as well, that concerted efforts across these spheres, designed to strengthen partnerships and really reinforce one another, are essential to most positively influence students' development. That is what we've really emphasized in the past year, so just kind of those areas of overlap, if you will. Okay. Oops. An example of that I'd like to provide involves the Race to Nowhere, for example, the showing that occurred in winter of last year. We were able to, privileged to be a part of the planning and the follow-up and the plannings of the actual screenings with LEED and with parents and teachers in the Lake Bluff School District as well as the high school district. It was a chance, really, an example of where we kind of rallied together and thought about something that really truly is important, impacting teens today in today's world, and thought about how we can bring that to the community, and then kind of come out, come out of that with ideas and strategies. So wanted to provide an example of that linkage that we've been trying to promote.
Another example is our partnership with LEED on our middle school series. This is a series of three workshops that occurs in the wintertime for our middle school families. From start to finish, we co-plan and feel that this is collaboration at its best. Presentations in the past have included positive social-emotional development, communicating with the adolescent child, and building resilient teams. We feel these workshops have helped equip parents with effective tools to help raise well-adjusted adolescents. Additionally, our strong partnership with our APT is crucial to the success of the initiative. Not only do we have representation, but we have strong contributors at our emotional wellness, building-based and district-based meetings. We feel our parent representatives help to bring about a unique awareness and critical support that has made our initiative a success. Commitment. This illustration right here is actually our Assignment Notebook custom cover, and it represents our character traits. Our character traits are the strong foundation from which all other emotional wellness programming has taken root. It is, it is important that we continue to intentionally infuse our character traits into all that we do.
Okay, and in fact, these character traits provide us with a very powerful common language and an approach that actually transcends just the traditional classroom setting. For example, we can take those character traits right into the lunchroom, into, onto the playgrounds, into the hallways, and even onto the kitchen table as well, you know, kind of what that looks like in terms of the behavioral expectations associated with each of these traits. So this is, again, something that kind of pulls us back and is able to bring us together as a community, as well as schools and families, where we can use some common language and promote children's healthy development.
We'd like to highlight some of our social-emotional character development in action. As you see, we use a variety of both research and non-research-based materials in our schools. We'd like to highlight just a couple today. One is our bucket fillers. Thanks to the Spirit of 67, the elementary schools hosted a guest author and presenter at the elementary schools this week. Ms. Stacy Lundgren, author of the book True Bucket Filling Stories: Legacies of Love, conducted assemblies for students in grades K through 3 and held in-class workshops for all of our 4th grade classes. Ms. Lundgren uses a bucket filling metaphor to explain to children their actions and reactions have a powerful impact on themselves and others. The idea of bucket filling is we fill people's buckets, or imaginary buckets, when we use kind and thoughtful words and actions. Conversely, we could be bucket dippers, where you're then not being so kind and not being so thoughtful, but we are promoting kind and thoughtful. At this time, I'd like to invite Jill Barrer and Tucker String to help me talk about the web program. Last spring, with the support of Dr. Griffith and the Spirit of 67, we were fortunate to send a group of seven staff to the web training. Web stands for Where Everybody Belongs. This is a middle school transition program that promotes positive student-to-student connections. We had 94 students apply for this to be a web leader, and we selected 52 web leaders, 8th graders that have demonstrated strong leadership skills. These 8th graders have helped us transition 241 5th graders into middle school. The program is designed to help all middle school students find their place.
Hi, I'm Tucker String, and I'm a web leader at Deer Path Middle School.
And I'm Jill Barrer, and I'm also a web leader at Deer Path Middle School.
I know for every web leader, they all have their own thoughts on what web leading means to them. But what web leading means to me is that you get to be a good role model to the 5th graders. It also means that you get to show 5th graders some of the things that helped you, helped me succeed in 5th grade that will hopefully help them.
Yes, and building off what Tucker said, what being a web leader to me means is that it not only gives me a sense of that I'm established at my school, but it gives me a sense of leadership and accomplishment also, because it makes me feel like when I step into those doors that like I've done something to help out the kids in 5th grade and to help them make the transition easier. And it also makes me feel happy that it is my final year at Deer Path and I'm doing something to, you know, help the school become a better place and to help a 5th grader. It makes me feel happy that I'm doing something to help somebody else.
It probably means a lot to a 5th grader as well. Oh, sorry, I'm not good at microphone.
It probably means...
Stand next to the microphone when you speak, though, okay?
It probably means a lot to a 5th grader as well, and when I say that, it means to a 5th grader, what Tucker's going to help me with.
What I think web means to the 5th graders is that they have someone they can lean on for help. For example, when I was in 5th grade, on the first day of school, we couldn't really find our buses, and I ended up almost missing my bus. But this year, we actually helped the 5th graders and most of the other people in the other grades find their buses on the first day of school, so no one got left behind.
And to me, what having web leaders could mean to a 5th grader is that they know that when they enter 5th grade that they have somebody to like catch them if they fall or like have kind of like a safety net if they ever need anything, they can just, you know, ask us for help and things like that. And also, it, being, if I was a 5th grader, I would think it was pretty cool that I had like a sense of connection at Deer Path Middle School, thinking like, oh, like, I'm a 5th grader, like I'm the smallest one at school, and those like 8th graders are up over there like being all cool and stuff, and it, it's cool that they have like a sense that if they see us in the hallway, they can... that they have like a sense that if they see us in the hallway, they can say hi and not be scared to like, you know, have a friendly face in the hallway and things like that. And having a program like WEB at our school not only means a lot to the 5th graders, but it also means a lot to Deerpath as a whole as well.
But I think what WEB means to Deerpath as a whole, that you can start off on the right foot in 5th grade. By starting off on the right foot, they'll be more comfortable at Deerpath. By that being said, they'll try new things at Deerpath, like effort or the basketball team or stuff, and they'll meet new people and overall have a positive experience at Deerpath through 5th to 8th grade.
To me, what having a program like WEB is to our school is it just makes it 10 times better than it already is within every aspect, making a 5th grader feel more comfortable, having an 8th grader have a sense of leadership and responsibility. And also, I believe it puts the staff that like is with the 5th graders a lot, it puts them at more of an ease because they know that they have a team of 52 people standing behind them waiting to help them instead of just kind of like, now I have to deal with like every single kid. So it should give them something to be like, oh, like they can help me out with this. And DPM was a wonderful place before, but now that we have this program, it just makes it 10 times better than it already was. And thank you for having Tucker and I tonight, and I hope you enjoyed our presentation.
Thank you very much.
Jill and Tucker, that was really well done, nicely done. Thank you so much. Okay, board members, we have a bit more to report on this particular initiative.
We would like to say also and end with this quote, "The life I touch for good or ill will touch another life and that in turn another until who knows where the trembling stops or in what far place my touch will be felt." Because of the actions of all who have been a part of this initiative, we dream more, learn more, and have become more. The positive ripple effect we have created as a community grows stronger and stronger every year. So we'd like to thank members of the board, the staff, the students. A big thank you for your unending support, your shared passion, and the immeasurable amount of time and effort that has made the Emotional Wellness Initiative what it is today. Thank you.
Any question for Rebecca and Joe while they're still here?
No, but I love it. It's got to be great for the 5th and the 8th graders in different ways. It's a great idea.
Yeah, thank you.
Even though they're not here, I'd just like to express appreciation for the WEB leaders that came tonight and all the other WEB leaders who were not present to share with us.
And you know, I'd like to say, there's a lot of people behind the scenes, too, that made not just the orientation day, but that are supporting throughout, and our staff and all of our students who support the students and who support the seven WEB coordinators who went to the training have really, behind the scenes, have done so much. So we just want to thank them as well.
So as we were putting together this presentation, I thought I would lead off with some of the metrics. As it ends up, we're going to end with the metrics, and I assured Rebecca and Joe that I could make it just as exciting as hearing our students, so we'll see if I can. And unfortunately, our students have left, but you know, we heard that it's that some of the initiative or this initiative could potentially make our school 10 times better, which is really getting into some of the data, but we actually have some data to show that we're at least 10% better. So I think that that's a pretty good start at things. So you can see that our Vision Statement III, we set a metric, if we go down to the next section there, Ann, that by 2015, 100% of our students would report positive perceptions of the school climate and demonstrate social-emotional competency. And we get that kind of information in a number of ways, but primarily from a survey that we've been giving for the last four years. And we asked the students to complete a survey and use a Likert scale, and anything above a 3 would be a positive perception. We newly wrote this goal last year, you may recall being part of that, and we're pretty positive about striving for the 100%. And you know, I believe that we could potentially get that to that 100%. And I think the best part of a goal like this is actually the process of going through the analysis every year. So if we never hit the 100%, just the opportunity we have to review the data, to go over it in staff meetings, to go over it in student groups as we might, and of course, as an administrative team, that process is part of what makes us better. So if we look at one of our annual indicators, the survey itself, we have it split out here for you from Grades 2 through 4 and then Grades 5 through 8. And you can see in Grades 2 through 4, 97.2% of our students do have a positive perception. So not to that 100%, but this is the first year we've kind of looked at the goal this way, but very, very strong and a positive result. And then in middle school, 83.7% answered positively as well. Again, a very strong result and a slight increase over the previous year. As in previous years, students report at very, very high levels, above a 4 in terms of how safe they feel in our environments. And I think that we all should take credit for that, our staff and every person who is in our building that makes our students feel so welcome in all the different environments across the school. And I have to say, knowing the high school data, this stretches up to the high school as well. The lower areas on our survey come when students' perceptions of each other, and pointing to the WEB program, this is an area that we really feel is we're going to see the growth in terms of those positive perceptions, when the students realize more just how kind and caring their peers are. And I think it's a perception issue, not an actual issue. I think the kids really are, for the most part, very kind to one another, so we should see that, and the WEB initiative is a big part of that. You have a complete report that we posted on the website regarding the survey. The next area, then, is that we look at as an indicator, our discipline, and we're very pleased with the discipline report this year. And in the full report is where you can see some of those percentages that I indicated, but we actually have a 19% increase in students this year who actually had no disciplinary incidents. So if you compare that 689 in '09-10 and in '10-11 to 809 students who actually had no disciplinary incidents, feel very proud of that, and the DPM staff all should take credit on that. But we know that in middle school, students are going to have issues, and this is a good time to work through them. So we're really okay with the student having an incident or two and then working through those real positive kinds of things we do that follow an incident. So again, some great results. And also, you can see a decrease on the bullying reports as well this year, which we've been waiting for with some of our initiatives over the past few years, so we're starting to see that. And then the last report here before we move on is another annual indicator, is the on-time attendance. And this is relates to students just showing up on time in the morning, not their attendance, you know, if they're sick or that kind of thing, but just are they attending? And we've hit a very stable result now of over 90% of our students having just a few tardies every year. We had the year we addressed the issue, then we've stayed pretty consistent. We do have this as an indicator on a report card, so we can watch it to see if it ever starts to shift down again. But I think that we've got a strong result now, but we always like to take the opportunity to remind all parents that we cannot, you know, we can encourage you to have your students to school on time, but only you can make sure that happens. And the influence it has on the other students' education when students are late is our concern. So just want to highlight that very briefly. So any questions about the report in general?
So, board members, we'll continue to report to the Board Education Committee, and then we'll take this also into the planning for the 2012-13 school year sometime around January, February.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so this brings us to, I gotta pull up my, this brings us to the President's Report. First of all, I'd like to give an update on our Superintendent's search. Back on September 6th, District 67 and 115 boards met together in a workshop together with our consultants, Dr. Linda Hansen and Dr. David Clough. We accomplished two primary objectives. The first was, we further refined and prioritized the desired attributes that were gathered from the surveys last year and also the focus groups. And those now have been posted on the website. In addition, we finalized our calendar and all the following dates, which Ann is showing you there. The key being that in December, on the 7th and 8th, we will hold our first interviews with six candidates. And then we move ahead to January 9th, 11th, and 12th, where we will hold the second round of interviews with the three finalists. And as you can see, it is our goal to announce, take action on the new Superintendent's contract in February. That's specifically February 13th. So it is our hope that this calendar does not need to be amended, and we can proceed as planned here. So it's going to be a busy year, but I'm confident that we can accomplish this. Secondly, I, prior to the meeting tonight, we interviewed committee applicants. We are also interviewing more applicants on Thursday. And we had requested people to fill out applications on the website. That ended last week, and we will be selecting, we have, you know, two community members on each of our board committees. For my part, I have to say, one of the things we, I think, I can speak for the group, it's amazing the quality of parent volunteers who want to serve on our committees. It was, we all walked out of there and said, wow, these are incredibly well-qualified people, and so, and will bring a lot. So it is going to be very difficult to choose because of that very fact. There's just, we really had great interviews and met some really great, great people. So thanks to all that have taken the time to apply and have taken the time to come and interview with us. And then finally, board members, this is about appointing a governing board rep. In the past, we have never really formally done this, and so by default, the president of the board becomes the governing board rep. Basically, this position serves as a link between the IASB, which is the Illinois Association of School Boards, the Lake Division, of which we are a part, and our board, and it's a two-year term. One of the functions of this person is to serve as the communication channel in terms of getting notice of all IASB events, to bring district concerns to the division meetings, and to report back to the board of the concerns that were expressed at those meetings. Our governing board rep, as a board, we have one vote, and our governing board rep would cast that vote after consultation with the board. In addition, the governing board rep will serve the board by facilitating communication about matters relating to legislative issues and IASB revolutions. And it seems kind of obvious, since we do appoint an IASB edred rep, that this person really should carry that title of our governing board rep. So I appointed Bill Anderson to be our governing board rep. In the past, as it was kind of a default position, we really didn't do a lot with it, but I think given the concerns about finances and what's going on in Springfield and the changes in education, this could very well become a more important position, and we may well need a stronger relationship with IASB. So thank you, Bill.
I accept her.
And then finally, board members, there is a sheet going around to sign up for attendance at the APT exec meetings. And so that we do have attendance at those meetings, I will send out a reminder note prior to, and if, for some reason, I know this is signing up for some meetings that are five months in advance, but if at the last moment you cannot make the meeting, just notify everybody by email, and we'll have somebody fill in. And that concludes the President's Report. Thank you. Dr. Griffith and the Superintendent's Report.
Okay, a few quick things. First of all, board members, I have the six-day enrollment for the start of this year. This is not a trend report. In the October board meeting, we'll have prepared for you the 20-year history and projections, a five-year projection report. But rather, this is just a quick glimpse at the start of the year with 358 students at Cherokee School. This is almost exactly the same number of students as last year, although I think that the inclusion of the Mandarin program with students from Everett and Sheridan School have contributed to that. Everett School is 342 students. Last year, they were 369. At Sheridan School, we are 251. Last year, we were 272. That's an elementary total of 951 students, or 44 students less than last year. And then enrolled at the middle school, last year, we had a total of 1,039 students, and this year it's 1,072. So we declined elementary side by 44, but we increased by 33 in the middle school, and almost all of it was in Grades 7 and 8. We really had a spurt in the 7th and 8th grade population. Overall, very flat. Last year, we had 2,034 students. This year, we have 2,023. So we're only off about 11 students. Pretty, actually, it's a smaller decline than we had projected, and I think that's because of the growth of population in Grades 7 and 8.
So that growth, is that due to new move-ins?
Right, that's obviously a really good question. It's a combination of, we actually had a spurt of students from foreign countries, as well as from outside of the lake forest population neighboring suburbs in Chicago. Some of the private and procheal school, we've had enrollment from there. So it's just, it's actually, I thought it might be one or two areas, but it's actually a mix of all of the above. And again, we'll have a trends report when we get to the October meeting, okay? Is there any other questions about the enrollment part? Also, I showed you the breakout of the frequency distribution of class sizes at the middle school also, where we've actually held pretty steady from past years also. Next, I would like to, we've got a teacher report, board members. I'd like to ask Andy Hendrickson, Dr. Hendrickson, to, we thought it'd be a good time of the year to show you a few things from our Netbook initiative at Deerpath Middle School. Dr. Hendrickson, if you'll do the introductions.
Thank you. We have two teachers with us tonight. Laura Montgomery has been longstanding tech coordinator at Deerpath Middle School, doing a great job. And with her, last year we had a 5th grade teacher, Amy Lambert. Amy Lambert, this year, took on the role of Netbook coach for 5th and 6th grade, and that's been a very valuable position to us. So without further ado, I'm going to let them share with you how successful our rollout has been so far.
Do you want me to help you with that technology, Laura?
I was going to say, we got a little bit of, here we go.
Lot of stuff going on on this computer.
Technical difficulties, right?
I would have been in trouble if you'd have said yes.
Members of the board, thank you very much for allowing us to come tonight. We're really excited to give you a little glimpse, a little snapshot of how our year has begun at Deerpath Middle School on the east side for the 5th and 6th grade. My name is Laura Montgomery, and I'm the Instructional Technology Coach at Deerpath Middle School.
And I'm Amy Lambert, and as Andy said, I was in the 5th grade classroom last year, and I was very fortunate to be one of the pilot teachers for the Netbook rollout pilot on behalf of Spirit of 67 from last year. So I was truly immersed in it last year and was able to then, this year, help roll it out. And as you can see from our first slide here, we And as you can see from our first slide here, we were able, within the first week of school, to have over 510 netbooks distributed to our fifth and sixth-grade students. And during that time, there was a lot of work that went in, well, before that first week when we were able to roll it out, there was a lot of stuff that went on behind the scenes of preparing these netbooks to go into our students' hands. And I do have to say that, from the ordering, the imaging, from the IT work that went into it, it was quite a, quite a lot of work. And from there, we were able to do some other preparations that needed to be done.
So, I wanted to say that, you know, with those 510 netbooks that were ordered and imaged and oriented and circulated, they were all within the hands of all of our fifth and sixth-grade students by the first full week of school. So, we felt very successful about that. A lot of preparations, obviously, went into this rollout. Besides the staff development that we provided for our teachers and the lessons learned from our pilot teachers, we also had, infrastructure was upgraded, IDs and passwords were issued to the students, the internet was connected, headline was activated, our gaggle.net emails were entered, Dropbox was downloaded, and the printers were installed.
So, once we had all of that ready to go, it was time for the kids to be able to get these netbooks into their hands. And I do have to say that seeing the kids take those netbooks into their hands was so rewarding, because we had the fifth-grade students upstairs unpack them in their homerooms, and then the sixth-grade students came downstairs to the library to check them out. And getting the opportunity to walk up into the classrooms and watch these kids open up their netbooks was so rewarding. We also had an opportunity for the students to watch video tutorials that Laura and I had put together onto a Weebly, and part of the process of checking them out was to be able to watch this video, how to carry it, how to put them into their bags, how to have it labeled, how to make sure that it was safely, securely around them. We also made sure that all students knew their information so that they could log on to the netbooks correctly. We talked to the students about the importance of having their netbooks charged at all times, because this is an instructional tool that will help them with our rigorous curriculum. And part of that is, obviously, having a fully-charged netbook at school each day. Students are given the opportunity to take them home or leave them at school, and if they do choose to leave them at school, we do have charging stations for them. And as you can see from this slide, we have some very happy and proud students who were modeling their netbook as they had freshly unpacked it and checked it out.
And like any new endeavor, we met some challenges along the road. Our lifesavers team, who we, you know, dearly call ourselves, along with Patty Fleezer, who is our library media specialist at Deer Path, along with our fantastic administrative team and the IT, and the IT staff, we've been meeting regularly, and we work closely to try to solve problems, keep our communication lines open, and, most importantly, keep everybody positive. We've created an information and tutorial site to keep everybody moving.
I just went around the other day with my cameras to kind of take some pictures of the kids, and it's, it's kind of a different look, as you see kids walk through the doors now that they have not just a backpack and their books with them, but they also have these netbooks that they're bringing to school with them each day. And watching kids unpack their lockers is a little bit different, not so many textbooks anymore, now that they've got their netbooks strapped around them, and as well as, you know, making sure that they're chargers with them in their bags each day before they leave to go off into class. And during this time that we're preparing not only our students, we're also preparing and helping our teachers with that development. So, Laura and I have been able to work with our teachers, and we're very proud that...
Amy, some teachers take a lot more extra tutorial, don't they? Who is that teacher behind you in that picture?
Mrs. Meadows, I'm very sorry. You know, just having that opportunity to work with the teachers, because we are, they all are at different levels. And, you know, some of them, obviously, are a little bit more natural with it, and others of them need a little bit more coaching, but they're coming along and having that, you know, time with us during their planning time to work has been very beneficial.
And we want you to understand that the 21st century classrooms that we are building at Deer Path are filled with readers, with writers, with thinkers, and they're doing all these things using tools that we have on, you know, on an internet-connected computer. We also believe in the 21st century skills of collaboration. These students are also problem solvers, they're risk-takers, and they truly are finding much more engagement in using these machines in an anytime, anywhere, learning environment. Students are engaged when they're learning new tools and the ways of integrating them. And our teachers and students are finding and using new ways to work with our already powerful and rigorous curriculum.
You know, being a 21st century learner does come from a lot of self-directed learning, and when we give those kids that opportunity to be that self-directed learner, there is a huge sense of empowerment that comes from it. We obviously know that the sky's the limit, now that we have these netbooks in our hand, and we are very thankful and fortunate to have this opportunity here in the district to have gone in a one-to-one classroom setting. And there's a lot of stuff that's still out there for us to reach to, and we're here to definitely support that. We know that it's definitely our present time, as well as our children's future, and we're here to help and watch them grow on behalf of the Spirit of, the District 67. We're very fortunate. So, thank you.
So, we know that we're on this journey, so we believe that, really, it's, we want to celebrate and encourage the 2020 vision for education. And the education, you know, like we said, is their present and their future, and not our past. And so, we really appreciate your time today, and we're really excited about how we've been moving so far. So, thanks.
Stay here for questions.
Yeah, nice job. Thank you.
I just wanted to close by saying, there were, there were a lot of people involved. We have Norong, Terry, and Justin were involved in imaging these 500 computers, in addition to getting the rest of the district ready. So, Herculean task on their part, and they did a wonderful job. Cornelius DeBeauz, of course, oversaw the project and responded quickly. Whenever there was an issue, it was very visible in the school, and we are really doing well now. You know, the point of this is not that the kids have computers. And so, we've also been trading stories, oh, did you see what Mr. Smith was doing? Did you see what Mrs. Corriere was doing? Did you see what, and I just, just one little vignette. I walked into Emily Corriere's Spanish class, sixth grade, a week and a half ago, and the kids were all working on their netbooks. So, I kind of asked them what they were doing, and they said, well, we're studying where Spanish is being used around the world. And they were creating little presentations of what they had learned. So, they had all the different countries, and each child had been able to choose one of the countries. And instead of, as they did last year, reading in their Spanish textbook about the different places, they were actually creating the information to share with each other. And think about how much more of that learning will stick. That's one of the great purposes of this project that you've helped us create this year. So, we are very excited. Any questions?
Yeah, Andy, are these meant, or either one of you, are these meant to replace textbooks over time, or is that not, not one of the goals?
Yes and no. Go ahead, Andy.
Yeah, I would have to say yes and no to that.
Amy, stand at the microphone. Thank you.
Yes and no. Obviously, can we forget paper and pencil right now? No, we can't. But when we look into our future, if we start looking even at what's going on currently with books and Borders and Barnes &amp; Nobles and all these places that are slowly but surely closing the doors, and books are outdated, and the information that we now have on the internet is current and fresh, and we can see what's going on from this morning, where a textbook is definitely into the past. So, are we with, you know, doing without textbooks? No.
And yes. Because we're, we're also involved in a pilot this year. In two of our sixth-grade classrooms, math classrooms, we're using an online textbook, Agile Mind. Through lots of research, we looked at this program, and it is a replacement of a textbook program. It's very visual, it's very graphic, it's very manipulative as far as, you know, moving things and watching animation goes. So, it's, we're taking a look.
You know, Rick, there's 54 million children nationwide. So, the education business is a multi-billion-dollar business, and it's real clear that the entire industry is moving electronically. Paper product-based products are going to start disappearing. Teachers like Amy are faced with selection of best materials right now, is going to still be in paper. But there's, there is, this, we're at the beginning of a very large transition. I don't really think it'll take that long, five, 10 years. I don't think we'll be seeing paper-based products in our schools.
And as part of that, I would think a lot of money could be saved on the cost side, too, because it would, not only would you save money, but you could update materials so quickly, as opposed to replacing all of them.
Yeah, I don't think that'll result in savings.
Yeah.
We're gonna, we're gonna end up being able to do a lot more with, you know, in the electronic medium.
And the online textbooks that I'm seeing are just as expensive, so it's interesting. Certainly saving on paper costs, though, with copying.
Are you finding it is more valuable in certain class, certain subjects than others, or certain types of teaching, or?
You know, I think, as I mentioned, all the teachers are at different levels at this point, and as they move forward and their use of them, we'll see some bright spots. But everyone's moving along.
Are the teachers getting enough training for using the netbooks?
That's Amy's job, and as others, too. And Laura's.
And we were working on it as well last year. So, through last year, we were doing some professional development, and as we get ready for the seventh, eighth-grade side, this year, we will also be doing some professional development with our seventh and eighth-grade teachers.
Some of our summer curriculum work was centered around that as well.
I just wanted to comment on the student training aspect. Little anecdote, my sixth-grader was very excited to bring home his netbook, and we unfortunately had a power outage due to a rainstorm, and I was told that it was my fault that he couldn't comply with the district policy about charging your netbook every night, and that I was supposed to write a note.
You should talk to a board member about that.
Thanks for a good training.
What is, what's the biggest surprise, or thing, least expected thing that you have experienced with the netbooks?
Ooh, the biggest surprise? I would have to say, it's the, the way that the kids respond. You know, I keep saying to the teachers, you don't have to know all the answers. And I think we were, we've, you know, come from a generation of teachers that they were the deliverers of information, and now the kids are the ones who can teach teachers. And walking into these classrooms and starting, you know, you see students teaching other students, it's not just the teacher now that needs to teach the student. So, I think that that's that biggest enlightenment, is that the kids feel that sense of empowerment and that passion for school, because they have a place now of knowledge to share.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Andy, stay right there. Amy and Laura, thank you so much. Really good job. Really good job. Thank you. Board members, we have an announcement to make. We've got some good news. I'd like to, well, I think, actually, I think it's Andy, since he wrote the grant for us, he's the one who should probably let you know, or bring to the community the attention of what just happened with the Asian Society.
I was dancing around the office about a week ago. It's not a pretty sight, but very happy, because we've applied so far for three grants for the Mandarin immersion program. The ISB, State of Illinois grant, that we received, about $19,000. We asked the Spirit to help us, and they were very generous with $3,000. And we just got our third requested grant. This one is, is even more of a distinction than a grant. Asia Society was formed in the 1950s by John D. Rockefeller as a way to connect US businessmen and organizations to Asia, to help us understand each other's language and culture. And this Asia Society has been a big influence in Washington DC and has offices in New York and California as well. But they have recently, within the last three years, tried to develop 100 sites across the United States, 100 schools or school districts, that they consider their lighthouse Mandarin districts. And so, they had had 60 up to this summer, and they were looking to fully complement 100, so they looked for 40 more in this, in this year. So, we applied as a K-12, because we have a K-12 Mandarin program, as you're well aware, and that is very unusual in the United States. And so, we received this recognition that we are one of the 100 United States Confucius classrooms of Asia Society. And as such, we'll be expected to share the triumphs and trials that we've had with other school districts at conferences, as well as visits to Lake Forest, as other districts begin their own Mandarin programs. There are only two in Illinois. In fact, I shared with you the list of 100, and it's interesting that two of them on that list, we've already gone to visit. So, we had already, without even knowing yet that they were Confucius classrooms, had connected with, with some of these great school districts. It's a $10,000 award that we will use in a number of ways to help support our K-12 Mandarin program. In addition, I've recently learned that there is a strong likelihood that in the second year, we'll be awarded $30,000 more for salary for a Mandarin teacher. And in the third year, there's a very strong likelihood that we could get another $30,000 for salary for a Mandarin teacher. So, it's, it's really quite a recognition for our district and boon economically, too. So, it was very exciting.
Yeah. 100 lighthouse districts selected across the country. It's, good job. Good job, Andy, and also to our staff.
Good job to you and the board for supporting it, and our staff. Thanks.
Board members, any questions about that, or comments?
The other Illinois school, what school district is that?
Huntley School District 158. It's not too far away. They've started Mandarin in eighth grade.
Okay. What suburb, or?
Huntley. It's out west, off of Route 20, yeah, off 90.
Thank you.
All right. Let's see now. To our staff, if you would like to stay for the rest of the meeting, you are certainly welcome to stay, or at any time. Do as you wish. But it's, it's another workday for you two tomorrow, so thank you for being here. Board members, last month, the board had asked that I bring a, oh, a summary of communications department employee costs across a variety of districts in the area, and so I have that here for you. I'd like to show that to our community. Okay, there we go. Thank you, Cornelius. So, I just thought I would show you this. Our, our cost for Anne Whipple as a consultant, not as an employee, is kind of middle of the pack. We, as you can see what other districts are spending, I believe only District Glenview 34 is that position includes some other supervisory responsibilities, and then with respect to everyone else, it is all about communications. So, it's kind of middle of the pack, and I just thought, as you had asked, to bring that. And we, that's a survey that we did about, that we were able to complete about three weeks ago. Okay? Any questions, board members? All right. And then, just two quick announcements. Oh, I'd like to show the youth summit. Anne, do you have that for us?
I have the update, the one coming up.
Yeah, in fact, let me have Dr. Cooley step up and say something about this. We had an amazingly powerful event occur just a, really a week or two ago, involving about 90 members of, youth members of our community. Julie, why don't you tell everybody about that, because this was very powerful.
Oh, my goodness, was it. And I'm thrilled to talk about it, and all of you will have much more exposure to this in the upcoming days. But 90 students were randomly chosen from Lake Forest High School, Lake Forest Academy, and Woodlands Academy to come together to talk about what it's like to grow up in our communities. And the students talked about what, they had facilitators that put them in small groups, and they talked about what was really good and what they cherished about growing up in our communities. But then they also talked about the struggles that they face. And throughout that day-long event, the students were able to process all the information, they brainstormed, and turned it into about six different topics that then they chose to present and also look for potential solutions. And they came back to that evening, about 15 of the students came back that evening. Most of their parents were there, Dr. Griffiths was there, there were high school board members, there were people from the city of Lake Forest, the village of Lake Bluff, community leaders of all kinds were there, including Susan Garrett. And these students then presented the findings. It was quite a powerful evening. Just today, I got the DVD. Just today, I got the DVD that was taken that night, so you'll all get a chance to see that. And so now there's a lot of work to do. What the students told us was that they do feel safe and wonderful in this community. They love the beach, they love the resources that we have, they love the town itself, but the pressures they face are, are quite strong in their minds, and, and I'm sure in reality, to, to succeed. They feel that pressure is, is difficult for them, but they know who can help them, and they are charging their parents to do that. So there are quite a number of, of different topics within it that we can get into, but one of the things that's going to support this whole initiative, which I think came out of the Race to Nowhere last year, November 2nd lead, and I believe the parent groups, APTs have co-sponsored on November 2nd Wendy Mogul, who is one of the offer, authors that was highlighted in Race to Nowhere, and she wrote two books, The Blessing of the Skin Knee and The Blessing of the B minus, both excellent books. So she's coming to town, and then there's, there'll be community-sponsored book reads and faculty-sponsored book reads. We've got faculty from the high school, District 67 and District 65, they're going to co-lead a book read prior to Wendy coming, and then she's going to have a faculty presentation as well. But the students have a lot of plans, they're very fired up, and I can't wait for you to see the video, it was a really exciting event. And we are considering bringing that down to the middle school perhaps, and maybe an on-year, off-year for high school, middle school in the future.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Julie. And then, board members, one final announcement. November 18th and 19th and 20th is the Annual School Board Association School Business Officials, School Superintendent Conference in Chicago. November 18th is the Friday. Would like to encourage each of you to attend. It is board training, best practice in board work, there's a variety of topics. Board leadership is a topic, you know, effective board meetings is another. There's just a host of items for you to sign up for, but you do need to sign up pretty much now because they, they fill up. And so I'd say sometime in the next couple of weeks. All I have to do is call Pam, she'll take care of everything. If you can go, just let Pam know, and then we'll make arrangements. Usually, we either carpool or train pool down to the conference and back. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Griffith. Which brings us to public participation. Is there a member of the audience that would like to address the board on a topic not other, not on our agenda? Seeing none, we will move to reports. We have already had the student development report, Dr. Griffith, the Standard and Poor's AAA rating.
You have board members that have Alan or Jennifer pitch in with me on this, just to say a few things. Do you want to do it, Alan, or? But this, this is good news to District 67. We've just had our, district finances have been reevaluated. Liz Hennessy is here from William Blair, so Liz, thank you for being, sitting with us here tonight. But she has also helped us with respect to organizing our material. And Alan, do you want to say anything about this particular rating, because you were in contact with them also?
Sure, I'll start with a question to Liz, though. Standard and Poor's, this is a biannual review that they?
Eighteen months.
Eighteen months or 24 months that they do. So several months ago, we received a series of questions from S&amp;P as, as part of a normal review process for the district. And it took a while to respond, I mean, they were, they were pretty in-depth questions, and we worked on them over the course of a week, week and a half, and we sent them back, but we recently received affirmation from S&amp;P on our GO bonds, affirming the AAA rating that we have on the bonds, and then on the debt certificates that we have issued, they affirmed a rating of AA+, which if I remember from when we issued those, is the highest rating available for that type of debt, or for those debt certificates. You know, this really would have folded in nicely to the budget presentation earlier, because the things we talked about, about planning for the shortfall in FY12, we had to address, because we were asked questions about past years and where we're at, and, and we talked through that, and they were satisfied with those answers, or felt that, that it was a good planning process. So again, we're happy that we've been reaffirmed with the AAA on the general obligation bonds and the AA+ on the debt certificates.
So, board members, in addition to looking at, you know, debt ratios and other variables having to do with the district's financial condition, the management system was reviewed. The final opinion of Standard and Poor's in this rating, I'll read from the report. "The stable outlook for District 67 reflects Standard and Poor's view that the district will likely continue to maintain its sound finances, supported by what Standard and Poor's considers strong general fund reserves and additional liquidity outside the general fund. Although officials are projecting enrollment to decline, we do not think we will change the rating over the outlooks two-year period, because we believe district officials will likely to continue to make the budgetary adjustments needed to maintain balanced finances. The district's wealthy property tax base and participation in the diverse Chicago metropolitan area economy provided additional rating stability." And that was the final conclusion of, of maintaining the AAA, the highest rating from Standard and Poor's.
Nicely done, Alan, but we expect a higher rating next time.
I'll say it without the qualifications. I, I think that we've got a great finance team, great, you know, participation from past boards, and I think you all deserve, and Harry, and I think you all deserve sincere thanks for the hard work that you've done and the good stewardship that's been shown.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Are we ready for board committee reports? Starting with the Board of Education Committee, Leslie Fisher and Bill Anderson.
Good evening. The Education Committee met on Tuesday, September 20th at 8:15 at Lake Forest High School West Campus Seminar 8. Present were administrators, Dr. Andrew Henriksen, Dr. Julie Cooley, Dr. Harry Griffith, and John Steiner. Board members present were Bill Anderson and myself, Leslie Fisher, and apparent committee member present was Amy Lazarato. First, we discussed September board reports. The social-emotional learning report has already been given in detail by Dr. Julie Cooley, thank you for that this evening, as well as by Rebecca Leifman and Joe Malan?
Meline.
Meline, thanks very much. In addition, as we heard from Tucker and Jill so eloquently not long ago about the web, where everyone belong, belongs program, we were also joined by Principal of Deerpath Middle School, John Steiner, who discussed the web program in Deerfield, and I want to, in detail, and I want to share just a couple of details about that. Mr. Steiner discussed the web, web program. He discussed the importance of middle schoolers being connected to their school, not simply looking back on elementary school or looking ahead to high school, but being connected to the present. Web comes from the Boomerang Project, recognizing that giving goes both ways, which we refer to as the Boomerang Effect. And I think Jill, today, one of the students, eloquently supported that by saying that she feels that for the past four years, her school has given a lot to her, and as an eighth grader, she is able to give back. It is important to note that LFHS instituted a similar program through Boomerang a year ahead of the middle school. Several interesting facts regarding the web program. Spirit grants paid for teachers and staff to be trained to implement the program, thank you to the Spirit. Nearly 100 incoming eighth graders, out of 280 total, went through a lengthy interview process, including offering important leader traits and ideas to improve the school in order to apply for a web leader position. Fifty-two were selected, as there are roughly two web leaders assigned per every 10 fifth grade students. Web leaders spent two full days training during the summer, all web leaders attended. Web leaders have sacrificed, they cannot head uptown right after school when duty calls, et cetera. Web leaders have assisted with the following thus far: fifth grade student, student orientation prior to the beginning of the school year, bus location on the first day of school. They also made home phone calls to every fifth grade student the night before they attended their orientation. They will continue to support throughout the year, locker organization, et cetera. Staff members, including administrators and faculty, who work alongside web leaders, will attend a follow-up training in September in Chicago to reflect, share, and problem-solve. And, there were also two written reports that were previewed by Dr. Henriksen at our meeting. I'd like to give a brief summary of each, if that is okay with you. First, summer 2011 curriculum work. The report preview was given by Dr. Henriksen. Greater than 100 District 67 staff members, spending an estimated 686 hours, participated in approved curriculum projects over this past summer. In the past, these projects used to be what we call loose, in that teachers and staff decided what they wanted to work on and were typically allowed to do so, regardless of the content of the work and its relevance to curricular improvement. Now, department heads approve summer curriculum work, and much of the work is related to the goals established by the Board of Education. Title II money given to the local government by the federal government and earmarked for schools is used to support this program. Another written report by Dr. Henriksen, which I will give you a snippet from, the professional development report, 2010, 2011. My learning plan, our professional development managed system, showed 58 professional development activities available for District 67 and/or District 115 faculty and staff. Writing, technology, world language, 21st century learning skills, crisis planning and intervention, and mathematics were included in these activities. Some external consultants were used at our in-services, but our faculty and staff were empowered, as many facilitated in-services, using their own expertise. At our October board meeting, reports will be given by Dr. Andrew Henriksen regarding the World Language Report Preview for 2010, 2011. Specifically, Dr. Henriksen will refer to results of the Grade 3 Exploratory Program Survey of the World Language Program, Lake Forest High School freshman placements, and the Mandarin immersion program update. Julie Cooley provided an update on our relationship with NSSED, as five to stick, five to six students who were formerly placed at a school in Highland Park through NSSED have been placed in their home district at Everett School. Everett's space and strong administrative background in special education have helped to ease the transition for these students. Initial feedback from these students' parents has been positive. In addition, the Education Committee has requested to know more about the specifics relating to placement in Explore and Quest Programs. It was suggested that Colleen Bruegemann speak to the committee regarding numbers, selection process, et cetera. And coincidentally, I came here this evening and found, waiting for me, this opportunity. Wednesday, October 19th, 2011, 12:00 to 1:30 PM, in the administration room, in the administration boardroom, where Mrs. Colleen Bruegemann will present on what I've just stated. It was also suggested that this committee, the Education Committee, be privy to the information discussed at Curriculum Coordinating Committee meetings, as this information will assist the Education Committee as they continue to make long-term goals. Dr. Henriksen will provide Education Committee with a recap and/or share minutes from the CCC October 20th meeting at our next Education Committee meeting. The Education Committee will next meet on Tuesday, November 15th at 8:15 at West Campus. Prior to this meeting, committee members will study and reflect on the district dashboard found on the district website. We will offer suggestions related to the data we believe should be illustrated. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Leslie, that was a very thorough report. That brings us to the Board Operations Committee, Lori Rose and Rick Schuler.
Thank you, Julia. The Board Operations Committee met on September 21st at 8:30 in the morning. This was a rather unusual and exciting meeting, because the members, board members and others present actually got to walk around. We started our policy, which Alan had suggested earlier this year, of doing site visits for all the district facilities, and we started this meeting at Cherokee School. At the conclusion of the meeting, we thoroughly toured Cherokee School, including going down and looking at the boiler, walking around outside, and I'll get to more detail on that in a moment. Members present at the meeting included Dr. Griffith, Alan Albus, Jennifer Hermes, Beth Wright, Cornelius Dubose, and Michelle Shin from the administration, board members, myself, Rick Schuler, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention Carol White, our Buildings and Grounds Coordinator was also present, and Julia, our board president. We approved meetings from the, I'm sorry, approved minutes from the July meeting, and I asked Mr. Albus for more detail on the Shared Services Grounds Initiative. Carol White presented an overview of the work orders that were completed at Cherokee School this summer, and the five-year capital plan for the building. As our guest, we had Dr. Shin to give us a firsthand look at what her issues and concerns were for the building. She reported that there was a lot of startup, as the summer setup included transitioning our Mandarin program to Cherokee School, and we discussed the process by which we would determine maintenance and technology projects that would be completed, and we're, we're going to create a wish list of sorts. As was discussed earlier, given the financial climate and budgetary constraints, bare bones work has been done over the last several years, and it's our hope that as we move to a happier place, that, that more projects will be able to be completed. As always, safety remains our priority to make sure that, that those safety-related repairs and initiatives are completed first. Dr. Griffith explained that preventive maintenance, sorry, preventive maintenance should be added back into the budget in order to preserve the strength of our buildings. The committee also briefly discussed some of the goals, which I'll get into here. Sorry, um, goals include identification and possible implementation of an online registration system, preparation, this, this has been completed, for the new transportation service provider. As many people are aware, we changed transportation service providers this year. It's a difficult logistical transition, as you can imagine with the volume of students in the Cherokee program, but I understand many of the, the glitches have been worked out, and that we're able to work very well with our new provider on an ongoing basis. Those discussions continue. We also have as a goal to continue to update the district's safety plan, and our goal includes by January 2012 to update the comprehensive emergency crisis plan. Last spring, Dr. Weimer reported on an initiative in this regard with an outside consultant, and we continue to work with them as we move forward on this plan. An additional goal includes complete the capital improvement projects. Some of these have been completed, I'll just mention briefly, roof replacements at Sheridan and Cherokee, the Deerpath parking lot, resurfacing of the Everett parking lot, and you'll hear a little bit more, I believe, later this evening about the lights initiative at Deerpath. Sorry, I'm switching papers. In addition to the Cherokee update, we heard from Cornelius Dubose, who presented an overview of our five-year technology plan. He talked about the projects that have been completed related to infrastructure, and the committee discussed future plans and directions. Cornelius advised the committee about the plan for replacing obsolete laptops, computers, carts, and labs. The committee briefly addressed the issue of the rollout of the netbooks at DPM and the need to look into the issue of IP addresses there. Alan Albus provided the committee with a brief overview of the, the goals as well, and he asked for group input on working with the format that we've established to try to, to quantify and measure timelines and goals. As we tour from building to building, which will happen in later meetings, we're planning to create lists of possible repairs and capital improvement plans for each building, and that will be put together in the form of a spreadsheet. Alan Albus also presented the committee with an update of the start of the school year and the new bus company. We adjourned the meeting following our tour, and the next scheduled Operations Committee meeting is October 14th at 8:30 AM. I'm not sure of the location, I believe we're going to another school, but I'm not sure which one yet, so this is a big mystery item. I'm sorry. Dr. Griffith, I stand corrected, it will be at Everett School. This concludes the oper, oh, wait, Rick, do you have any comments to add?
Nothing in particular, that was a very thorough recap, thank you. I'd just like to say that you can pick up on a theme here that we've touched on earlier in the meeting, where the last year, cost containment has been the key issue, or a key issue. And one of our goals is to make sure that we're looking forward now to keep our facilities up to date, our IT up to date, so that the classes can maintain the same quality. And coupled with that, we want to make sure that our budget is not misleading, we have a nice reserve, but we need to make sure that we're accounting for capital expenses, not just not just this year, but the next five years. As Ellen mentioned, capital expenses are very lumpy. That makes them more difficult to budget for, but they're very critical to the planning process, so our goal is to keep on top of that and expand that five-year budget as best we can.
Thank you very much. Again, a very thorough report. This brings us to the Board Finance Committee, Jeff Penderzky and John Julian.
Hi. The Board Finance Committee met on Friday, September 23rd. Present were myself, John, Liz Brandell, Julia, Harry, Alan, Jennifer, and Beth Wright. We tackled nine agenda items, and four were endorsed or approved, and I'll just kind of walk through the highlights. We met at 7:40 and approved the meeting, the minutes from our July meeting. Alan went through the detail behind the standard impores, ratings of AAA on the general obligation bonds, and the AA+ of the debt certificates. And I think that's great news, but I want to point out that that's primarily because of action taken by boards and staff members two, three, four, and five years ago. So, I find it a little uncomfortable to rest on our laurels and celebrate too long, because this is coming back in two years, right? And so the things we're doing last year and now kind of keep us in the green the next time this comes around. The group also discussed debt refinancing options, because low, because interest rates are so low, and a debt refunding resolution will be brought to this board in October for adoption. And Alan, it's probably not a bad idea for you to say just a couple of words on that.
In September of 2002, the district issued $5,850,000 of limited debt certificates. The final payment on those bonds will come due on January 1 of 2016. The bonds will become callable on January 1 of 2012, so the earliest the certificates could be restructured, I guess by the rules in place, would be October 1 of 2011. On a regular basis, William Blair and Company monitors refunding opportunities for their clients. In general, when present value savings meet or exceed 3%, Blair recommends that clients restructure the debt. Our advisor, Liz Hennessy, who, as we've said, is in the audience tonight, informed us recently that by doing those calculations, we would actually yield a present value savings of 4.435% or a net present value dollar savings of just over $94,000. Our intention was to bring this to the board for your action tonight, but with the scheduling of meetings, the Finance Committee met on Friday, the Board Packet went out on Thursday. At our meeting on Friday, we got into a very, I think, healthy discussion about other scenarios or options of either restructuring the debt, the whole debt, or paying down a portion of the debt and restructuring a portion, or simply paying off the outstanding bonds and saving all the interest costs. So when this comes up on the agenda, the recommendation for you tonight is going to be to table it, and we're going to work through some scenarios, because we need to look at how that impacts our cash flow, and just have a general discussion about how that impacts our fund balance. But we anticipate coming back in October with a recommendation to you. It's going to be good news or better news. It's either a savings of $94,000 or something greater. And again, credit to Liz, because they monitor that on our behalf and advise us.
Thanks, Alan.
Let me ask Elizabeth a question while she's here, okay? Elizabeth, the window, in the past, when we've had, when we, a couple of, one or two other times, we've had callable opportunities. What about the window for this? Because the interest rate environment's really supporting this, and the callable concludes as of January 1st of 2012. Do you mind using the microphone, Elizabeth? But just talk about the window part of this, okay?
I think we're in good shape, because rates have been low, and, you know, the bad news and the economy fuels interest rates even lower. And these bonds are on the short end of the yield curve. They mature January 1, 2013, through 2016, and so we see less volatility in that area where the yields are the very lowest. So, I do think we have some time to go back to finance and think about, you know, what options you want to consider determining if you want to use some of your fund balance to pay down these bonds or refinance them. They are debt certificates, they are paid out of your operating funds. So, you know, I think we have time to do that without much interest rate risk.
Is there a deadline, though?
There's not a deadline. I mean, the first maturity that we're refunding is 20, is 1-113, so, and they're callable 1-112. We can do it after that, but the longer we wait after 1-112, we're going to have less savings, because we're going to not be able to capture the interest savings from that period. Okay?
It's not possible that our board meeting schedule would affect our ability to refinance on favorable terms, or?
I don't think so. You know, it's all interest rate volatility, but, like I say, you're well over the 3% target, and it probably makes more sense to, you know, determine exactly what structure you want to use, and then you can come back to the board meeting in October. What is that date?
I think it's the 26th, October 26th, or, right, right, it's the last week of October.
Okay, past the parameters refunding resolution, it's good for six months, and then we would move directly to getting the rating refreshed for that bond issue and locking in those savings.
And Bill, what I think we need to work through is do we refinance them all, part of it, and then redeem a part, or redeem the whole thing, right? And that's just kind of a business case we all need to work through.
Thank you.
Question, are these proposed savings net of the cost of the refinancing?
Yes, they are. Thank you.
So let's, is there anything else for Elizabeth? So just a few more items here, and we talked through options for long-term disability coverage. We endorsed a proposal with Standard Insurance Company, and we'll go through that on the Board Actions tonight. And also, we reviewed a proposal from Allied Benefit Systems. We also endorsed that proposal that we'll go through tonight. We spent a big chunk of time going through the district's five-year financial projection, and the group discussed several scenarios using the projection, and focused on key concerns around the long-term trends for the district's viability. And I'll just kind of lay out, lay out what they are, so everyone knows my concerns. The continuing challenge economics in the community, the cost of maintaining our aging infrastructure, low interest rates, so we're not earning much on our fund balance, rising insurance costs, uncertainty and timing of state funding, looming future deficits as labor costs grow more quickly than anticipated tax revenues and state revenues. We also discussed areas for additional cost savings should conditions deteriorate further. And finally, we kept in mind that we are in the education business, and that's got to be really the first thing that we worry about. So, a lot went into our five-year projection discussion. Finally, the, we went through the 2012 goals, and the committee endorsed using the same format as last year, and the meeting adjourned at 9:15, and I don't think we've got another one on the calendar yet, but I'm sure we will soon. And that concludes the finance report.
Thank you, Jeff. That brings us to district committees, in which we act as liaisons. First, we have the North Suburban Special Education District, and back to you, Jeff.
And we do not have an NSSED report this evening.
Thank you. The Illinois Association of School Boards, an EDRED, Bill Anderson.
We do have a report. As a governing board representative, I attended a meeting yesterday of a group called EDRED, which is a lobbying organization that represents 75 elementary and 13 high school districts in Cook County, Lake County, and DePage County. And EDRED is an interesting group. They have two basically full-time lobbyists who spend a lot of time in Springfield and are looking out for, I think, interest of suburban, Chicago suburban schools, in just about every issue related to education that takes place in the legislature. And their core sort of beliefs or principles are local control of education and financial decisions, stable, reliable funding from the state, and no unfunded mandates. And there was a detailed discussion of major legislative developments in Springfield over the past several months, and I'll just highlight three of those. There was talk, I guess, in the legislature last year about school district consolidation. Illinois has 850 school districts, which is more than most states per capita. After a long discussion, a task force was created, I think called the Children First Task Force, which is chaired by the Lieutenant Governor, and it is supposed to report, issue a report by next July. The findings of the task force will be non-binding, so any further move towards anything in that area would still have to be introduced in the following legislative session and have to go through that whole process. We also discussed the pension fund system for teachers in Illinois. It remains underfunded, as it has been for a long period of time, and they're working on numerous ideas for new sources of revenue. Finally, what's called Senate Bill 7, but it was a big education reform package, was signed by Governor Quinn in June, and it contains a number of interesting items, which you can Google at your leisure, but among them, it allows for school districts to lengthen their school days. It changes provisions for teacher evaluations, including tying them to student performance, allows for merit pay for teachers, requires school board training, makes report cards more user-friendly, and provides evaluation, changes the evaluation criteria and reports for school principals. EDRED meets monthly during the school year and is very involved in advocating on behalf of Chicago suburban districts, and I will report from time to time as there are developments which affect our district.
Thank you very much. Professional development, back to Jeff Penderzky.
I think we're, I think we're deferring, I think that's me now, but I'm deferring to Andy Hendrickson, who has more to say on this. Thank you.
Well, we did a summer curriculum report, but just, you know, that was a big, a big deal for us. We spent a lot of time, a lot of different groups, came up with a lot of neat things. Just to highlight, one of the kindergarten teams came up with a 21st century learning project that they're rolling out, and their colleagues in kindergarten are excited about. It involves some technology, and involves lots of looking up of resources, some hands-on things, some experiential learning, and it should be an exciting, an exciting change for one little facet of curriculum. In August, August 1st through 5th, we joined with Barrington and Schaumburg and spent just a fraction of what we would have spent on a week-long Mandarin immersion consultant and team to come and help our new immersion teachers. So that was a big success. August 23rd, we did an all-district day prior to school opening, and I credit Amy Lamberty with a neat idea, and that was an unconference. The idea was, all of us are at different stages of our 21st century learning knowledge, and so we asked the teachers, in three sessions, to give us suggestions of things that they would like to learn and discuss. And so on Monday, the 22nd, they gave us lots and lots of suggestions, and then overnight we put together a conference of 48 different choices in three time slots for our 300-some staff to go to, to discuss. Not presentations and not, you know, polished, polished learning, but hey, here's a couple people that have done this, and here's some more people that would like to learn about it, got together and had discussions. And for many, many of the staff that reported on that, that was a valuable learning experience, and they've made connections, K8 of teachers that are of like mine and want to do similar things. So that was a success. Of course, the web was another big learning experience for some of our teacher leaders, as well as the kids, and I'll count that as professional development, too. So there was a lot going on up to the beginning of school. We haven't had any meetings since school started, because we usually use these first three weeks as getting to know the students. So, committee meetings are about ready to start, though. Thank you.
Thank you. This brings us to the Curriculum Coordinating Committee, and Lori Rose.
Thank you, Julia. As Andy said, things are just getting started. The Curriculum Coordinating Committee has not met yet this year. Our next meeting is scheduled for October 20th in this building, and we will be, we will be concluding our search for the new community representative at that time.
Thank you. That brings us to the Spirit of 67 Foundation. The Spirit of 67 Foundation Board of Directors met on Tuesday, September 13th, at 9:15 a.m. Ruth Muscarella presented the year-end, June 30th, 2011 financials. A little over $136,000 was made in contributions that was not raised at Spirit events, with 569 families participating in the Spirit. That is a, an all-time high for the number of parents or families participating. Moving on to this year, $4,200 was collected in August, bringing to date $38,000 and change has been received in donations since July 1st, with 210 families participating. Donations currently are down, and the board discussed this and believes it is a result of the District 67 moving exclusively to an online school fee payment. So, this past July and August, only 39 donations in the form of checks were sent into the Spirit, whereas last year, at the same time, 156 checks had been received. The Spirit Board is hoping that the Communications Committee's efforts on curriculum nights to place a Spirit donation form and bookmark on each desk will bring in more donations. And furthermore, the You Are the Spirit Week begins Monday, October 17th, with a phone-a-thon conducted by the Spirit Board of Directors. Last year, over $13,000 was raised during the phone-a-thon. That week culminates with the Fall Benefit Luncheon on Friday, October 21st, at Exmoore Country Club from 10:30 to 2:30, which includes a silent auction. And I believe that the information on the Fall Benefit Lunch, if you are interested in attending, can be found on the Spirit website. That concludes the Spirit of 67 report. And brings us to, were there any other committee meetings not listed that district members attended? Dr. Griffith?
I just forgot to do earlier, there's a little minor jobs program going on in Lake Forest, so I would like to thank the liaisons who are attending tonight's meeting. I meant to do that earlier. I know that some of you have babysitters.
Thank you. And brings us to the recommendations, the first being adoption of the 2011-12 budget. Dr. Griffith?
Yes, board members, you already have heard the report from Alan Albus, but this time I think we turn to Jen Hermes for the recommendation on budget for the 2011-12 school year.
It's easy to follow now that Alan's done all the hard work. What you have before you tonight is the adoption of the 11-12. Following all of the official legal guidelines that we laid out in July, the budget was, has been on display, and has been available for inspection to the public since the July Board of Education meeting. Our recommendation is that you approve it as presented.
Any questions, board members? Actually, I do have one. We've mentioned a lot about capital improvements and funding. How much have we actually set aside for? Yeah.
I believe the amount is about $900,000 this year, which is, the majority of which is going to roof replacements and the parking lot at DPM. The parking lot at Everett actually is a tie-in to the budget. Again, when we talked about the TIF, that's actually being paid for out of TIF revenues.
Thank you. Any further questions? Any questions from the member of the audience? Okay, may I have a motion to approve the adoption, approve the adoption of the 2011-12 budget?
So moved, seconded.
Thank you. May I have a roll call vote, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Wald?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. Penderzki?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. This brings us to the adoption of the debt refunding resolution. Dr. Griffith?
Okay, board members, you also heard an early report on this. I would recommend that we table this item for tonight's agenda and with the anticipation that we may be back to the board at a later time.
I move that we postpone this decision till the October board meeting.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. This brings us to the approval of the 2011-12 long-term disability policy. Dr. Griffith?
Okay, thank you, Madam President. Board members, Alan Albus will give us a brief review. This was mentioned in the finance committee report previously.
In your packet is a memo from our consultant, Bob Pratt, from Benefit Brokers and Consultants. And I'll read portions of the memo. "We've received the renewal from Standard Insurance Company concerning the LTD coverage for school District 67. The good news is they're requesting no adjustment in your rate for the upcoming year effective October 1, 2011. District 67 previously had coverage with reliance with a rate of 20.24% for $100 of covered payroll. As you know, we marketed the LTD and Standard proposed a three-year rate guarantee of .20% for $100 of covered payroll. We've completed the three years under the guarantee and will retain the same rates for the next two years." When Bob called me and talked to me about this, I had asked about the feasibility of going to market. And his read on the market at this time was that he's seen flat trends or slight increases, not decreases. So as we talked it through, he recommended taking and locking in on this for the two-year rate guarantee. So as Dr. Griffith said and as Mr. Penderzki reported, we reviewed this with finance last week and recommend that you approve.
Any questions? May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote?
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Wald?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. Penderzki?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries unanimously. I keep losing my agenda. Okay, this brings us to the approval of the Allied Administrative Services Agreement. Dr. Griffith?
Okay, again, board members, back to Alan Albus for a brief review. This was also reported on.
As I look up at the board table, I think the only board members who might know some of the history of this would be Mrs. Wald and Mrs. Rose. Because several years ago, we had a fully insured dental plan through a co-op that we participated in. And there was a lot of dissatisfaction among staff. That's actually how we became associated with Benefit Brokers in this regard. I had worked with Bob previously, and we had talked to him about what could we do. The district used to have a Blue Cross plan, they went to a MetLife. And as I said, people were very dissatisfied with the service. What Bob recommended is that we do a self-insured plan and not do fully insured. We were big enough, dental experiences tend to be stable. So we looked at that, and he put a model together for us, and we structured that. Now, when you go self-insured, one of the things you have to do is hire a third-party administrator to process your claims. And so, Allied was the company that was chosen at the time, again, that was marketed. There are probably four, maybe five, good TPAs in the Chicagoland area. They all have their nuances about them. But the high school had been using Allied as well, and so there was consistency there in the people we deal with. So it was marketed, we went with Allied. Allied has done, I would say, a very decent job on that. Another component, then, that we've used Allied for is the administration of our flexible benefit accounts, including the Flex debit cards. And so, in front of you tonight is a recommendation to renew all three of those. The total cost on all three for the year is about $9,552. And that's broken down to a dental administrative fee of $2.50 per employee per month, a Flex administration fee of $4 per employee per month, and a Flex debit card fee of $1.50 per enrolled employee per month. Again, this was reviewed with finance and they endorsed the recommendation. Thank you.
Any questions, board members? Any questions from the audience? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the Allied Administrative Services Agreement?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mrs. Wald?
Aye.
Mr. Penderzki?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. This brings us to the approval of the DPM parking lot lighting. Dr. Griffith?
Okay, board members, this is a part of the remake of Deer Path Middle School parking lot. And last month, we asked you to reject the bids that we had received. They were rebid, Carol White and Alan, I don't know if you'll want to talk about this also. Oh, Jennifer will, okay. And because, you know, the bidding was two companies that had quite disparate bids. And so, we went out for bid again, and we think we're in a much improved position. And this will help us complete the parking lot project, as well as our obligation, which was considerably smaller than what the city actually paid for in the total, totality of the project. So Jennifer, could you summarize? We've got some pictures here for you, too.
Certainly will, and I'm so happy because very rarely do we have anything to put up on the board and get to show. So what you're actually looking at is, this is a picture of the existing lights behind Deer Path Middle School. And if you'll switch to the next picture, which of course isn't a real picture, but if you can use your imagination just a little bit, this is what the new lights would look like. If you recall, as Dr. Griffith mentioned, we did bid this project earlier this spring. We worked with our architect Perkins and Will on the specifications. Those bids came in higher than we had anticipated. So we went back to the architect and made some adjustments to our specs. In addition, at that time, we became aware that there is an Illinois state grant that we may be eligible for some funds if we took a look at putting in LED lights, which do have lower maintenance cost and a longer lifespan. So what you see before you today is the rebid, but also a splitting of our project into two phases. Because of the overall costs are still higher than our original budgeted figures. But if we receive the grant dollars, which there's $21 million available remaining in this particular grant, so we think we have a pretty good shot at getting some of those funds. If we receive the grant, we will go ahead and do Phase One and Phase Two. And Ann, we actually have a diagram of the school. I don't know how easy it'll be to see. There you go. So the ones to the right, to my right, which are the red, are the existing ones that we know we will need to replace in Phase One. If we receive the additional funding, we'll go ahead and do Phase Two. If we do not receive the grant, what we would suggest is that you'll see that come back in our fiscal year 13 budget to finish up Phase Two. We may need to rebid the project at that point because the bid amount may no longer be valid. Unless there's any questions? We do have, Associated Electric was the low bidder, received three bids with this round of LED lights. And they were the low bidder in the amount of $75,400. And that would be for Phase One and Phase Two, or the total entire parking lot.
Jennifer, is it possible that a substantial portion of it could be recouped through the grant?
The grant would cover, they cover 50%. So I believe, yes, substantial.
Thank you. I also just wanted to mention that we had a little discussion about these particular lights in the Operations Committee. And this project kind of highlights the need to balance long-term planning versus fiscal conservatism today. LED lights are a long-term energy savings, possibly a little higher cost than non-LED lights, but over the long term, these are the kinds of capital improvements that we're hoping to implement with a long-term view, as Dr. Griffith mentioned, for the benefit of all our students.
Just an example, the standard light fixture we have now, the lighting bulbs will last about 10,000 hours. These new LED lights will last 150,000 hours on average.
Any other questions, board members? Seeing none, may I have a motion to, any questions from the audience? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the Deer Path Middle School parking lot lights rebid?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. Penderzki?
Aye.
Mrs. Wald?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. This brings us to the consent agenda items. First, we have the approval of minutes from a regular meeting and an executive session board workshop on July 26th. We have the minutes of a joint workshop and executive session on September 6th. We have the approval of disbursements, payrolls, and financial statements from August 2011, with disbursements totaling $623,983 and payrolls totaling $1,312,687 and the August 2011 financial report. We have the approval of human resources items, including the approval of leave requests, new staff retirements, and status changes. We also have the approval of the application for recognition of our schools. And we have the, under record of closed meetings, we have the destruction of audio recordings from October 20th, 2009, and October 22nd, 2009. Is there any item that a board member would like removed from the consent agenda for further discussion? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
A roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Mr. Penderzki?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
And Mrs. Wald?
Aye. And we can have no further motions tonight because Ben can't talk any longer. She's got a bad cold, so we're all feeling for you. Okay, this brings us to the FOIA requests. We had two. One from a representative for United Roofers, Waterproofers, and Allied Workers, and one from Icon Office Solutions in Vernon Hills. There was no executive session this evening. Future agenda items, is there something that a board member would like placed on the agenda for a future meeting? Seeing none. We come to announcements. Monday, October 10th is Columbus Day. There will be no school. Monday, October 17th is the beginning of Spirit of 67 You Are the Spirit Week, culminating on Friday, October 21st, with the Spirit of 67 Fall Luncheon, 10:30 a.m. at Exmoor Country Club. On Tuesday, October 25th, is our next Board of Education meeting at 7:00 p.m. right here. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, the motion carries. Meeting adjourned.